Good evening, welcome to the Kent City Council meeting for August 17th, 2021. If you would all join me and we will do the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Kim, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Troutner, Councilmember Boyce.
Here.
Councilmember Fincher.
Here.
Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Councilmember Larmour.
Here.
Councilmember Michaud.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kim. Item number three on our agenda this evening is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes from council or staff? All right, seeing none, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda as published.
So move.
Got a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. All right, moving on to the next item on our agenda is public communications. We've got several items this evening. We'll start with public recognition. The first item on the agenda is an appointment to the Arts Commission. Council, I am pleased to bring forward a recommendation for confirmation of appointment for Robert Howell. Mr. Howell is a semi-retired attorney who practiced law for most of his career in California, and he was also a technical theater degree from the University of Washington, and has spent many years working on productions for Seattle Theater companies before relocating to California where he continued his involvement in large-scale theatrical productions as well as community service projects such as theater for foster children. He is looking for ways to be engaged in his community and has moved to the East Hill of Kent, near the East Hill Nursery, so we are very excited to have his expertise come to the Arts Commission, and I am respectfully requesting that council confirm that appointment this evening under the consent calendar. The next item we have on our agenda is a proclamation for diaper awareness week. I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation, then I'm going to ask that our guests from West Side and East Side Baby come up and join us and say a couple of words, and I will present you with the proclamation. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers can adversely affect the health and well-being of babies, toddlers, and their families. And whereas national surveys and research studies report that one in three families struggles with diaper need, and 48% of families delay changing a diaper to extend the supply. And whereas children go through six to 12 diapers each day, and without enough diapers, babies and toddlers risk infection and health problems. And whereas purchasing enough diapers to keep a baby or toddler clean, dry, and healthy can consume 14% of a low-wage family's post-tax income, making it difficult to obtain a sufficient supply. And whereas the people of Kent recognize diaper need as a public health issue disproportionately harming Black, Indigenous, and families of color, and acknowledging that addressing diaper need will lead to more equitable economic opportunities and improve health for families and children. And whereas West Side Baby and East Side Baby Corner serve on the front lines of Kent's COVID pandemic response, helping families in our communities weather the crisis. And whereas Kent is proud to be home to a trusted, community-based organization that recognizes the importance of diapers in ensuring health and providing economic stability for families, and thus distribute diapers to families through various channels. Now therefore I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim diaper need awareness week in the city of Kent, thank the aforementioned diaper banks, their staff, volunteers, and donors for their courageous service during the crisis, and encourage citizens of Kent to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and those organizations that collect and distribute diapers to those struggling with diaper need. If you all remember, we had talked about this on one of our Zoom council meetings, the city of Kent participated in a diaper drive, the entire city, back when we were all still locked down, and very proud to say that of all the cities that participated, we had more donations than any other city. Not going to call out my friends in Federway for any reason at all. But this council chamber is the entire back half was full of diapers and wipes. So I know that the city of Kent, our residents, recognize the need and the expense that comes along with making sure that there's a significant, that we've got a reasonable diaper supply for our families. And I want to thank both West Side and East Side Diaper for the work that you're doing. And if you'd like to come up, and I will present you the proclamation, and you can say a few words.
Thank you so very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mayor Ralph, and members of the council, members of the public. I just want to thank you all for acknowledging the issue of diaper need and for coming together to support. We know that in our county, about one in four families experience diaper need, and families in Kent, in South King County disproportionately experience diaper need at a rate of about 9% higher compared to other regions. And my name is Becky Schroeder, I'm with West Side Baby, and together, West Side Baby and East Side Baby Corner, we work with community partners such as health clinics, food banks, and early learning centers to provide millions of diapers to families free of charge each year, and to advocate for equitable access to diapers and other basic needs items for families and children. So I just want to thank you again for presenting this proclamation and for everything that you all do, and for acknowledging the greater implications of diaper need on health and well-being of families in our community.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for having me tonight. My name is Jack Edgerton, I'm the Executive Director of East Side Baby Corner. I am honored to be here with you, the council, and the mayor, to talk about diaper need and diaper need awareness. As you so eloquently said, Mayor, many, many folks in our community are in need of basic essentials like diapers, wipes, formula, and West Side Baby and East Side Baby Corner are so proud to work with all of you to make sure that every child is healthy, safe, and thrives. We've noticed throughout the pandemic, our distributions are up exponentially. So far this year, we've distributed over 50% more diapers than we did at this time last year, so the need continues to increase. We've distributed more than a quarter of a million diapers to residents of Kent in the last year, working with our over 23 partner sites in the area. We are so proud to be working with you to make sure that children have what they need to thrive, and thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. We're going to move on in the agenda to community events, and before I turn it over to Councilmember Boyce and the rest of the council members, the one agenda or event that I would like to talk about tonight is there's a car show, we have Cruisin' Kent Car Show coming to Kent Station on Sunday. We're really excited, this is a partnership between Kent Station and the city of Kent, and every year, a nonprofit partner is chosen for donations, the proceeds from the car show, and this year, it is the American Cancer Society. So something that is very near and dear to my heart, and I know to a lot of people, cancer touches far too many people in our community, and the ability to raise funds for them, and also have a great day at a car show seems like a good way to bring awareness to the need, and also find a way to celebrate with your family and hang out and enjoy what I'm guessing will hopefully be sunshine again. So that is on Sunday at Kent Station. Councilmember Boyce, any community events?
I do not have any community event, but I do want to say, I did attend the car show last year, had a great time, and I'm looking forward to attending it this year as well too, so, great event, so, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to point out, there's an event happening tomorrow night at Hillside Paradise Parking Place, they're having their summer celebration between 5:00 PM and 8:00 PM. They usually do this every year, it's a really fun event, they'll be doing a, they'll be doing a ribbon cutting, they'll have food, garden tours, yard games, henna, and a bunch of fun activities, and it's outdoors, so I'd invite neighbors and public to attend that at the Paradise Parking Place, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other community events? Okay, seeing none, we are going to move on in our agenda to our presentation around the Kent International Festival, and joining us this evening is Nancy Skipton. Good evening, Nancy.
Thank you so much, Mayor Ralph, for having us here, and all council members and members of the public. I'm going to read so I don't get off the rails here. I am Nancy Skipton, I'm the Executive Director of the Kent International Festival. It's my pleasure to be here to share with you about our community's Kent International Festival. Our festival brings together the numerous populations who have moved here from all around the world to share their heritage and culture with the city that they now call home, the city of Kent. I have been part of the festival since the, part of the planning of the festival since the very first year in 2009. This year, we will, hopefully, with everything going great, hold our festival on, our 13th annual festival on September 18th of this year. It will not be at Showwhere this year, but we will be outdoors at the Moro Meadows Park from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Our ongoing theme of learn from each other comes to life every year at our festival with our cultural passport booths, our local organization booths, our entertainment, and the food that we have served from local restaurants in past years. Learn from each other is what our festival is all about. Our mission is to build a flourishing and inclusive community that fully embraces its diversity through celebrating its people's cultural heritage by organizing our annual festival. Like it has been for all of us, COVID-19 has taken a toll on how we live our lives, how we celebrate our lives, including the cancellation of events and large gatherings. Last year and earlier this year, we held completely virtual celebrations of our festival so that we would stay in the presence of others. On September 18th this year, we'll be returning to our first in-person festival since then, yes, on a smaller scale, and fully outdoors at Moro Meadows Park. Instead of our usual international food court, which kind of requires being indoors and lots of electricity, we will be having some local food trucks serving some tasty dishes from their particular cultures. This year, we're also partnering with Living Well Kent, who holds their East Hill Farmers' Market at Moro Meadows Park, and the Kent YMCA, which is located inside the park. They'll be celebrating their second anniversary of their opening the same week that we're holding our festival. The other thing that's happening this week is something that people may or may not know about, which is a group called WelcomingAmerica.org. They hold a welcoming week every year, and their mission is very, very similar to ours. Their mission is that through the welcoming week, organizations and communities bring together members of all different backgrounds to build strong connections and affirm the importance of welcoming and inclusive places in achieving collective prosperity. This year, welcoming week, they have a declaration, actually a hashtag, which is hashtag "Belonging Begins With Us," that each and every one of us has the power to help others regardless of their background. We help, we can help others to feel that they are seen, embraced, welcomed, and included in our communities. Our festival will continue to be a free event for the public, general public to attend, so please mark your calendars for the Kent International Festival on Saturday, September 18th. We welcome all of you to be there and celebrate with all of Kent's wonderfully diverse community. I also would like to invite anyone who's on the council to please consider coming and being one of our guest emcees and introduce some of the really great entertainment that we're going to have, and we welcome all of you to attend. It's free, it's outdoors, and we're going to have a lot of fun. Thank you so very much for allowing us to mention this today, we appreciate it.
Nancy, thank you so much. I want to say to you, thank you for your perseverance through COVID. As you mentioned, there were two, two of the normally scheduled in June events that were canceled, but you figured out a way to make sure that they continue to happen, and there was fabulous entertainment and learning opportunities and all of those things. So I'm so grateful for your commitment to this community. It's going to be nice to be outside and be able to gather together, and yeah, it's the International Festival, for those of you that have not had the opportunity, fabulous event, brings together people from all across the city, and reminds us of the importance of our diversity and how much we all benefit from that, so, thank you very, very much.
Yes, and we thank you and the city and council's support that you've given us over the years.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our public safety report, and joining us this evening is Chief Raph Padilla. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, it's my pleasure to present tonight. It's a relatively lighter report than the last two, they've been pretty, the last two have been pretty comprehensive. If I had to give tonight's report a title, I would call it appreciation, celebration, and engagement. So we'll get started here. I want to start by doing a lifesaving award presentation to Officer Ian Lentz. Could I have Officer Lentz on the board, please? We'll have you stand right there. Right front center there. Officer Lentz is a veteran officer with the department, he started in 2013 as a corrections officer, moving to a commissioned sworn peace officer in 2016. His primary duties revolved around the patrol operations, and does an exceptional job in community-based policing. He definitely has a heart to serve and protect, which is a requirement for us. Officer Lentz is one of our defensive tactics experts, so he is involved with training our officers on how to control situations, use force appropriately, de-escalation, and things of that nature. He's one of our experts, and is involved in our training cadre for those parts of our training. In addition to being an outstanding officer, Officer Lentz has a knack for being in the right place at the right time when it comes to saving lives. Intervening in medical emergencies is his forte, and I hope he doesn't apply to be a firefighter, so. Tonight, and we had a little bit of the discussion of this, but tonight is the third formal award of a lifesaving medal for his very, relatively short career. So when I say he's in the right place at the right time to save lives, he has, this is his third award. We think there's another incident he was involved with, but this is the third formal report. So what happened? On May 24th, Officer Ian Lentz responded to assist another officer going outside of his district to help, and there was a call for a male who was at Motors and Controls Corporation located here in Kent in our industrial area. The male had gone into cardiac arrest and was not breathing and did not have a pulse. Officer Lentz arrived to assist, began lifesaving measures including active CPR, and continued those efforts until Puget Sound, a regional fire authority, could arrive and take over with more advanced lifesaving efforts. As many of you are aware, when it comes to saving lives, people in cardiac arrest, medical distress, minutes are crucial. What we say in the business, and what's nice is our state actually is one of the national models, that the sooner you can get lifesaving efforts going, the more likely the person's going to survive. And that's why we outfit our officers with defibrillators, we give them combat lifesaving aids, and that's why on every medical emergency call, officers get dispatched at the same time as firefighters. That's why, and so we have a lot of saves, and Officer Lentz is very good at that. He is being commended tonight for his quick response to save a life, right? And he was credited by both the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority and the King County Public Health Office as being responsible for the man being alive today. His actions embody our department values of service and professionalism, and so please join me in congratulating Officer Ian Lentz.
Hey Chief?
Yes, sir.
I think his family bad, did he introduce him?
Good call.
Good job.
Good call, council member. Officer Lentz, did you like to introduce your family?
Sure. It's my wife Ashley, we've been married for seven years, right? Maybe 10 years?
You say we've been married for seven years?
So is our eldest Riley, middle Mason, and the youngest Avery.
You know, Officer Lentz is not one for a lot of recognition, so this was fun for him, I know. I came in today, and he says, hey Chief, we're a little short on the street, so I can get back to work right after this. So thank you very much, and thank you for your family for coming. All right, next up, oh, that's why the award didn't show. I'd like to, this is, this is an excellent time, to call Pastor Reynard Sands, his wife Tracy Sands, and Cindy Hollis, please, and if you could stand up here, I'm going to talk about Jim, while you're here. So as you know, we have an award called the Chief's Award of Citizen Commendation, and it goes to those in the community that go above and beyond to engage with our community, to support our community in some way, to support the police department, and to bridge and unify our community, both community and police relations. And although tonight, they are getting the award for the specific actions that came during our Police Week this year in May, more so, they are receiving this reward because it's an ongoing effort and action by them that has started long before May and continues on. So this isn't a one-time thing, but they are being recognized for our event this past May. So, I do want to note that there were several other members of the community that are here today, I see the big faith-based community, there were many hands involved in this, and to us, and to them, we say thank you as well. Our faith-based communities have really stepped up for law enforcement this past year and a half, they've always been strong supporters, but in the last year and a half, they have really been the, literally the light that has helped keep us going and helped been behind the scenes, and so we can't thank you enough, and Kent is very strong in that. So, that said, National Police Week is held every year in May, and with the culminating event being the National Law Enforcement Memorial event being the National Law Enforcement Memorial Day. So this year, we held that event. It's, it's a sacred thing that we have a small ceremony every year to, to remember those that were fallen. In preparation for that, this team here led, came up, I think it was Your Vision, Pastor Sands, and that he came up with this idea that he wanted to do an outpouring. He wanted to celebrate and, and basically spoil the police and show them how much we love them. So that, the precipice for this started. But with every good initiative, it takes people to organize and get it, get it going, and so that's why you see Tracy and Ms. Hollis here, Mrs. Hollis here, because they got the ball rolling in terms of organization and, and formatting. So, many hands, but these are the leaders of it. We got to work, they pulled together the team, and it was nice. I showed up to just say thank you at several planning meetings that we held, and they just ran with it. When it was all said and done, on the day that was very sacred to us, our Memorial Day, we were spoiled with a food truck, a coffee stand, all day. Loving support from the community who attended and stood with us as remembered our fallen. And as you can see in the picture there on the slide, an enormous outpouring of gifts in the form of goodie bags to every office, to every employee in the police department. And those were my favorite, because if you look at those and take a moment, the artwork and the messaging are done by kids in our elementary schools. And they, they put it together, they loved on us, and this was just an incredible, incredible event. What you don't know is that the three up here have been working long before this. Pastor Sands leads a group every Saturday and has been doing so for several weeks now, who comes and just lifts up the department, prays and...
Chief, many, many months.
Months.
Like, a year.
Year, okay.
Sorry.
And that's been ongoing. He's leading through his faith and bringing people together with the message of uplifting the city, uplifting the officers, and bringing us together so that we have a, a strong, healthy, and safe city. And so thank you for that. Mrs. Hollis, who you may recognize the name, is married to Commander Bobby Hollis. I think he's sitting right here today. In addition to, you know, supporting her husband in, in what can be a, a challenging career, she has been involved in volunteering for a long time, many years, in our youth leadership group, in our youth conference every year, with our wife's support group. And so, as they are being recognized for this specific event, this is culmination of many, many months and years of, of work that they've done. And so this is our way of saying thank you, we appreciate you, and I'm honored to bestow the awards on you. So, they get a little bit of hardware.
All right.
Get over there. I'm a paparazzi here.
Cindy, I'm gonna read off of yours. So it says, Chief's Award for Citizen's Commendation, May 9th through 15th, 2021, was the National Police Week. Cindy Hollis, Pastor Sands, and Ms., Ms. Sands, I'm gonna say it's her that's been there, were instrumental in assisting with members of the Be Like Jesus Ministries, organizing and sending goodie bags, and food truck, and all kinds of great stuff from the department. And the officers were treated throughout the day and supported in love, and they really worked to show how much the community appreciated their service. Cindy and Pastor Sands, Tracy, are being commended for their leadership and dedication towards enhancing police-community relations and ensuring that KPD officers are supported and cared for. Congratulations. Commander Hollis. Always take the picture. Okay. Do you wanna say a speech?
Speech. I know you're not, all right, I'll take it. You can stand with me if you want. First of all, I wanna say to Madam Mayor, council, all the council members, the chief, it's an honor. I just, we, we just want the community to know, number one, that we love our city. We love the city of Kent. We are 100% behind the police department and our mayor and the city council. And all we wanna do, we wanna make sure we are an example to everybody in the community that we're gonna stand together. And that's all the reason we do what we do. We serve, just like you guys are serving, we serve, because we want people to know that Kent, we will be that light on the hill. We will be that light, not just for the city of Kent, but for the whole Northwest and hopefully for the world. And we determine to be that model for people in America all over, that we don't just talk the talk, but we walk the walk. And we say, if people wanna see how to get along, love each other, support each other, work together, all they have to do is come to Kent and watch us. So I wanna thank all of you, and God bless you.
Thank you. I told you it was all good stuff tonight.
Chief, really quick before we go on from here, Pastor Sands, Tracy, Cindy, all of the familiar, loving faces that I see out here tonight, I just wanna say thank you from the bottom of my heart. I talked about the room being full of diapers during diaper drive. This council chambers was full of all of these gifts and donations that were gathered to, to, to honor and support our police department during, during Police Week. Same, same kinda thing, there was a need, and, and through your leadership, the community came together and supported our department. I think back, it's been at least a year ago when I found out you guys were coming down here on Saturday, and you were praying for our city and praying for our police department. And I will tell you, there were a number of Saturdays where I came down feeling like we were never gonna make it through COVID, and I didn't know how our city was gonna get through all of the things we went through, especially last summer. And I left every single time with the hope and the belief that this community is stronger than anything that can be thrown at us, and it is 100% because of the support that you have been providing and the prayer for our community, and I just wanna say thank you.
Okay. So, we lost some time being directly connected in person with our community, and we did not like that. So now that we've had the opportunity the last few months to be engaged, I will tell you that we've been very busy, working very hard to be out and amongst our community, particularly in non-enforcement modes, just being humans amongst humans and relating to each other and, and caring for our community. So, with that, I'm gonna go through some, an update on some of the things we're doing. First up there, and I'm very proud of this program because I had very little to do with it. Right? That sounds weird, I know. I asked our community education unit and our neighborhood response team to see if there were things we could do in the community that were different than what we had been doing, that particularly were directed at some of our more afflicted areas with high crime and violent crime, that were gonna be something that would gravitate kids to be with, in and amongst police and community. And I said, I just gave the concept up there, that was it, that was my involvement. And they came up with this concept of cones with cops. And so now, what has occurred, we've had four events at specifically some of our harder-hit apartment complexes in the city where we have high violent crime and other things that we're dealing with, and they partnered with Metal Suite. I wanna say thank you to Metal Suite, Dairies in Kent, who provided all the ice cream. I also wanna say thank you to our Parks Department, because I didn't know this, but apparently we have an ice cream cart that we've been making great use of. And the team got to work, and what happened were the series of photos you see there, where they were just out there serving ice cream cones on some hot days, just making the kids feel good, talking to the parents. You know, there was a little business in there, because I don't think anybody in this uniform goes into the community and doesn't get told, hey, I wanna tell you something, because that occurs, but you know what, that's good. But we loved on our community, we did it with, with current resources and zero budget, but I think the impacts there and the relationships built are the ones that we need more than ever. So very proud of the work done by our team. So that's one of the things that's occurring. I don't know, but I think we're gonna try and squeeze in a couple more events before the end of the summer. This past Sunday, some of us got a chance to continue what ended up being the fourth of a series of community celebrations up on our east hill in the area we affectionately refer to as the McChevron area. If you know the history there, we have dealt with significant issues with shootings and homicides there, and it's, it was, it's been a rough go over the years, but one of the bright spots, and again, this shows what our faith-based community is doing, was that we've partnered with, with Pastor Bowles, Lawrence Bowles with Redeemed by the Blood Kojic Church, and his team to do a series of community walks over the years that have really directly impacted the violent crime there, galvanized the community where they know that the city of Kent government supports and values them, and we give them a space to come together, talk about issues, bring resources to the problem, and then celebrate what we're doing. In all honesty, COVID was a little bit of a setback. The numbers definitely trended in the wrong direction since all the increase or decreases in crime we saw from 18 to 19. But we're going back at it. And this celebration that we had this Sunday is kind of a declaration of, we're back, we're retaking the community, watch the results come, because they're gonna be outstanding. So very proud of that. Mayor Ralph, you attended as well, and Councilmember Michelle was able to go and be there and be present. Good food, good music, and good people. It was a great time. So wanted to highlight that work that's being done. Mayor Ralph and I hosted last night the It's Law Town Hall Community Forum. That was an excellent event. It was pretty well-attended. We weren't really sure how many we're gonna show, and it was a great mix of people from the community. And quite honestly, we had some of our police reform activists that, from other parts of the, of the county that came and gave great broad perspective on the issues. We had very, sometimes, to be honest, difficult conversations, somewhat uncomfortable, but it was good, it was, it was important, the discussion was, was relevant, and we talked through the issues and presented the information, I thought, in a very good way. I wanna thank Councilmember Fincher and Councilmember Laramo for attending that as well last night, and CEO Matheson was there as well. So, we thought it was very, a good opportunity to be transparent and accountable for what's going on, to say that we very much welcome and embrace some of the reforms that are gonna take place and the positive impacts that that's gonna have. At the same time, we're, we're ringing the bell that there are some tweaks that need to be made so that we have all the intended impacts and not just some of the outcomes that we were looking for. So more work on that. We thought it was a good event. We are considering doing additional events, so stay tuned for that. And this one's a big one there, National Night Out. So after a year hiatus from this, we went, and I think we knocked it out of the park. We hosted 50 events, about 50 events this year, although that's smaller than yours prior. What was nice is I think we were able to facilitate getting more visitation time by, by city staff and police officers as well at all the various events. So I wanna, I wanna say thank you to the community, all of the neighborhoods and the leaders in those neighborhoods who hosted and coordinated events. I wanna say thank you to Mayor Ralph and the members of the city council that were out there doing visits. Thank you to city staff. We had representation pretty much from all the departments going out and visiting that night in and amongst our, with our police officers and our, our department employees. National Night Out was a uniting gathering to say, to stand against crime in our communities and say that that's something we want to see much less of, and the way to get there is to come together as a community. So that was part of it, but the other part was just getting together, breaking bread, if you will, having ice cream and being together as human beings, and we loved it. So, with that, I think we have a video that we'd like to show that gives you a good idea of what occurred.
We're so excited to be back out in the neighborhoods. You can see all of the people that have come together as a neighborhood to have a picnic and visit with each other, hang out, let their kids play. This is good stuff.
So my favorite part of National Night Out is always getting a chance to meet people for the first time and just hang out as humans, right? And a non-law enforcement role, that's awesome.
It's a chance for our city officials, city workers, police department, to just reach out to the community and just say hi on a nice social level.
Some of the communities, they break out all the stops. It's always cool to see what people are gonna do to, to get their community to come together.
When you know your neighbor, you just feel better, and it's a way to bring a diverse community of people together. Food, music, games, doesn't matter the language, doesn't matter the age, you put that together, bring people together, it's a great way to just get into your community.
Just seeing all the smiles, the kids playing, neighbors hanging out in their lawn chairs. It's about community, this is why we say we are Kent.
Having kids see police in a place where we're just having a good time and it's what they really do, community policing, I think is really good.
When you drive into the neighborhoods and they know who's coming and visiting, you know, they're very welcoming, they want you to show up, they wanna just have conversations with you. And seeing them on a level that's more social and engaging, it's a time to just be people.
Why would we not take the opportunity when presented to us to be able to celebrate and recognize the individuals that work tirelessly every day to make sure that we're safe in
Getting to know your neighbors, right? That's what keeps a neighborhood safe. And then there's just that, that sense of place that you get from being a part of a neighborhood. And so National Night Out allows all those things to happen. People come out, come out of their houses, share a meal, share some ice cream, and just get to know each other.
When you have elected officials come out, the mayor was able to come out and speak at our board meeting, which is very important, and what that meant to the community here is that the city cares about what's going on. The city, when we send in something and say we're having an issue, the fact that the mayor took time out of her day said a lot about the community and what she wants to do.
There's nothing that makes me happier than to see neighbors back together and being a part of community.
A chance to kinda get that face-to-face connection with the people that make a difference in our everyday.
On behalf of the police department, the city of Kent, we wanna thank our community for coming together tonight and celebrating National Night Out. Thank you again.
All right. So, it, that is outstanding video, right? We are very blessed, and the last part of it before I get to the next slide is, special thanks to our marketing, our communications team, and our multimedia team that were out there. They do a phenomenal job, and they turn the product out like this. We're very blessed to have that. And I also wanna do a special thanks to our community education unit, Sergeant Kelso, Stacy Judd, Sarah Wood, for planning the events and coordinating the 50 different gatherings that we had in the city. Just truly amazing, very proud of that. Like I said, tonight's report is all about celebration and engagement, right? So. And last but certainly not least, I wanna put in a plug for an upcoming, our Fall Community Academy is being organized now. You can go to our website, you see the, the site there at the bottom. Shortly, registration will be open, and we invite you to come out and attend and get a behind-the-scenes look at what our train, our police officers do operationally, all the units. What's really important for me is that you get a connection with the people who are out there doing the job and a whole sense for what they do. If you ever wanted to be tased, you can do that here. If you, if you ever wanted to be inside a, inside the jail without being arrested, you can do that here. If you want to use a police simulator, or if you want to understand a little bit more about why we do what we do, this is a great, great opportunity to do that. Probably the best part, I think, in the feedback we get, in addition to the outstanding instruction, you get to get in a police car and go out for a ride-along tour and see firsthand what the officers are doing. So, it fills up quickly, registration should be out in the next few days. Look for our announcement through our social media. Get in there, we welcome this, this session, barring any major changes or, or orders. We'll be live and in person. We had to do two cyber sessions, but we're coming back live, we're bringing back the hands-on components of it. It'll be a great time, and we encourage you to come out for it. So, looking forward to that. And Madam Mayor, that completes my report, and I'll take any questions if you have.
All right, thank you, Chief. Councilmember Boyce.
I just wanna make sure I understood, you say a ride-along, or you get to drive the car? I had one of it, so I heard you, so.
So, Councilmember, as you know, insurance, law and order. But if you okay it, and get our adjustments to approve it, I'm, I'm good with it.
All right. Any other questions for the chief? All right, I am not seeing any. Thank you so much, Chief. It really is a great celebration this evening of community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we are going to move on in our agenda to reports from council and staff. This is an opportunity for everyone up here on the dais to share with the community some of the work that they are doing outside of council meetings and committee of the whole meetings. I have a couple of things I would like to touch on tonight, meetings that I've attended over the past several weeks before I turn it over. Top on my list was National Night Out, but the chief covered that really well. Definitely one of the highlights of the year, getting out and into neighborhoods. I think I had a chance to visit four neighborhoods. I think most of the council members up here were out visiting neighborhoods, just a great time to connect. Onto some business, we had the Ryan Nine meeting, which is our watershed inventory area meeting this last week, and we had a discussion there about the establishment of a Duwamish Basin steward. So we have stewards in all of the basins in our watershed, including the Lower Green, which directly serves Kent, but this is a position that helps establish salmon recovery projects as well as community outreach, making sure that we are finding ways for the community to connect with the river and the things going on there. So a lot of good discussion around the establishment of that Duwamish Basin steward. It does come with a price tag, and we will be watching as our, as our partnership, our share in the, in the watershed goes up. So we're wanting to keep track of that, but in concept, it is a really important asset to the watershed. Also had the Flood Control Advisory, the final meeting of the Flood Control Advisory Board. I am the vice chair of that committee, and I am proud to say we completed our work, and really that is a letter of recommendation and guidance to the King County Flood Control District regarding the budget. Kent, as has been the case for many years now, fared very well in this budget. The projects that we expected to be funded that need to be completed here in the city of Kent along the green were all included in that proposed budget. Looking to see, I think that that, with that, I am going to end my report. I'm going to look to my right to Derek Matheson, our chief administrative officer.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. You mentioned budgets, and I wanted to talk about the city's budget process. All of our departments have submitted their mid-biennium budget adjustment requests, and then this year, they're also making requests for funding under the American Rescue Plan Act. And departments will present those requests at a special budget retreat of the executive leadership team tomorrow, and then after that, the mayor's office and finance department has to make some decisions that will culminate in the mayor's proposed budget, which will go to council at the end of September. So that process is taking a big step this week. And then speaking of the executive leadership team, we're making great progress on performance measures and plan to present approximately 30 draft measures to you at a council workshop later in September. The rest of my written report is in the packet, and there is no executive session this evening. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Derek. Councilmember Boyce, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had two great presentations tonight. One was a water system update, and they were talking about Kent senior citizens, Kent senior citizen need assessment. That's a hard word to say. Assessment, excuse me. So first, I want to talk about the water supply. We got great water in Kent, you know? If you have an opportunity who lives in Kent, you're very lucky. There's lots of places who don't have good water, and there's a reason for that. We have a great maintenance team that really go out and make sure that they put things in places to make sure our water is able to sustain. We got 16 wells in Kent. The snowpack was extremely well this year. Most of you know that the governor put a, declared a drought on July 14th, so, but we have great adequate supply of water in Kent. But I don't mean you can go out and water your lawn until the night's end, okay? But as I said earlier, there's lots of projects that was going on that got completed. One was the 640 pressure zone, 125 gallon tank was recoded, replaced lots and lots of water mains. Then they got this system where they call the logic control upgrade, which is like the brain of the computer, although something that we was able to complete. Some of the project they got on the list to do this year is a clot spring generator and electrical upgrade, PLC replacement, pump station seven and five. They can be continued to do some well rehabilitation as well as the West Hill Reservoir, as Councilmember Fincher talked about earlier, and continue to do some recoating inside the tank. Also, water main replacement for East Titus and North State Avenue. So the theme that I kind of got, they say, water is essential, reliable, and invaluable. So we are very fortunate to have a great team that really keep our water supply clean, refreshed, and sustainable. So kudos to the team. Our other presentation was on the senior service needs assessment, right? So we talked about the history of the senior citizen, which I thought was surprising that they've been going over for 55 years. It's not all that the Kent senior citizen, but 55 years in Kent, which is good.
I remember.
You remember? Oh, okay, yeah. And prior to COVID, they had over 250 and 300 senior drop in on a daily basis. This assessment really is, the purpose is really just go out, identify key needs and assessment that we need within our senior citizen, and look for gaps that what we can do to try to continue to improve and make the Kent senior citizen a place where everybody want to go. They sent out a survey, got close to 900-plus responses back, can take that data and try to implement it to make our senior citizen even better than what it is. They also talked about areas of need that came out of it. One is community inclusion, health and wellness, nutrition and food security, support service, and transportation. So they do, they put a strategy around each one of those, and I think between now, maybe the end of the year, we'll come back and talk about some of the things that they'll be implementing. So two outstanding presentations tonight, and I'd like to say kudos and thanks to the team. I myself, I sit on the Sound City Association Pick Committee as the vice chair. We pretty much took the month of August off, so I have not the report, but I will look forward to our report coming in September. So I'm going to start to my left, and Councilmember Cor, do you have anything to like to report out?
Thank you, councilmember. I serve on three regional committees, and we did not meet this month. My next meeting is for Puget Sound Clean Air Agency Advisory Council on September 8, and I serve as chair for that committee, so I'll have update during the month of September. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCord. Councilmember Lommer.
Thank you. I serve on the King County Affordable Housing Committee, and we met back in July, and it was mostly just updates and briefings from staff on our work, our work plan issues, and nothing terribly pertinent to Kent. However, we did get a report from a guest from Bellwether Housing, and it was interesting. It was a presentation on what affordable housing developers are looking for in order to build in the community. So top, you know, top things that they look for to be able to do these projects is political leadership, strong commitment through our comprehensive planning, and to make affordable housing zoning available, and then high capacities, they called it high capacity bureaucracy, but it's having adequate staffing levels to work with them and really be a partner throughout the process of building in the community. So, so yeah, the full presentation's available on the committee website, and that's all I have to report this month.
Thank you, Councilmember Lommer. Councilmember Thomas.
Mr. Chairman, I have no report for you this evening.
Okay, thank you, sir. And Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So the Arts Commission, Free to Rome, Kent Creates is, that's the web portal that is back up and running, by the way. It was down for a bit, but that's back up. Free to Rome is the theme. You have until the end of September to be able to submit your artwork. And for King Conservation District, we have a new executive director coming on board, Rosa Mendez. So we have hired a new executive director that is going to be starting soon, and then as far as the Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Committee, we meet next week.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Madam Mayor, that ends our report.
All right. Thank you. Even in the month of August, when things slow down, you can tell the council remains very busy representing the city of Kent, so very grateful for that. Thank you all. Next item on our agenda is public hearing. We do not have one this evening, but we, that does bring us to item number seven, which is public comment. The public comment period is the opportunity to speak to council and the mayor on issues that relate to the business of the city of Kent or agenda items council will consider at this meeting. Comments that do not relate to the business of the city of Kent are not permitted. And additionally, I just want to remind everyone that Washington state law prohibits the use of public comment to support or oppose ballot measures or any candidate for office. So we do allot three minutes for our speakers. When you come up, if you could please state your name and city of residence for the record. And Kim, could you please call our speakers?
Thank you, Mayor. We have two people signed up to speak tonight, Carrie Wise on Star Lake Totem and Michael Skidery on Star Lake Intersection.
All right. Thank you.
So Carrie?
Thank you very much. I am Carrie Wise, and I'm representing myself and my wife here tonight. Her name is Wanda. We live on the West Hill, we're Kent residents. I've been a Kent resident off and on since 1968, so I've been, been around the city for a while. Mayor and council members, I appreciate the opportunity to give you an update on construction conditions in a small corner of our pleasant, livable city. The situation at the Star Lake Totem construction project is out of hand. As a neighbor and citizen, we are, as neighbors and citizens, we are disheartened and disillusioned by the lack of consideration being given to those of us who have to live with the consequences of this demolition and construction activity. What have we had to endure in detail? Well, extreme and persistent noise, very often beginning as, as early as 6:05 in the Intense fumes from heavy equipment. Invasion of rats since the Star Lake Portables went down. Security lights shining into our yard and our bedroom window all night long. Loss of privacy from security cameras. Dust and dirt aerosol that we have had to breathe, which requires increasing asthma inhaler use for my wife, and it settles in and on our home and property, making it filthy. The traffic restriction at the intersection of South 270th Street and 40th Avenue South, making, it is impeding the residential and emergency access to nearly 400 homes. No communication with the neighborhood. Loss of over the, over the air broadcast reception of the Channel 9 and Channel 13 groups. Traffic disruptions with no notice and dangerous unaware flaggers. Large, I think they're four-foot, four-foot diamond traffic signs, diamond construction signs that are left out on the sidewalk, obstructing the sidewalk and obstructing the line of sight for, for traffic. General lack in forethought and awareness by the Federal Way Public School System and B&amp;B builders as to what the neighbors have to put up with. We have tried to be patient with this project, but we're fed up with having to be the ones to reach out and identify the many easily foreseeable problems and issues. Our quality of life has been significantly reduced since this project began. You who represent us cannot know about the problem until it is brought to your, to your collective attention. So are you listening? What remedy and when will be done for your citizens, taxpayers, voters? Thank you.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Thank you, Mr. Wise. Yes, Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wise, thank you for bringing this to us. I'm just curious, have, have any of you guys reached out to the contractor, or did they try to talk to them at all?
Does the sun rise in the east, Mr. Boyce?
Okay. So no, okay.
I, I don't want to throw them completely under the bus. When we bring our concerns and descriptions of problems to Ivan Moss, who is the, the site superintendent, we sometimes get action for remediation, which may last a day or a week, but it, it happens all over again.
Thank you, Mr. Wise.
It's just a fact of they're not looking ahead and looking at, at projecting the consequences of their actions.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do not see any. Thank you. Mr. Skidery.
Thank you. The next speaker is Michael Skidery.
I hope you hear me through the mask. My name is Michael Skidery. I live in Kent, Washington. I'm the current chair of the West Hill Cambridge Neighborhood Council. Start now. Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to talk about a safety issue at the West, at the Cambridge Neighborhood related to the construction of Star Lake Elementary School. Before I get into the discussion, let me thank Councilmember Brett Fincher and Public Works Director Barron. They've already talked to me about, I've already talked to them about this issue, and I know they're working on it, but I still need to feel that we need to talk with you about this. I'm representing the council here because a number of residents in Cambridge have talked to me about the problems at the, at the current intersection of 40th South, 40th Street South and 270th Street. The current configuration with the construction has reduced the width of the intersection to 20 feet from 24 feet. There is right now a security fence up, which is reducing even more to 17 feet, but even with that fence removed after the construction is over, there's still going to be problems with the, with the intersection. There's just not enough room for the vehicles to turn safely. They were potentially hitting vehicles coming in the opposite direction. One resident described to me how he had to back up to allow a fire truck to pass through on 270th Street. The truck was making a turn from 40th onto 270th, which is the emergency access route into the east part of Cambridge Neighborhood. I myself attempted to make a right-hand turn from northbound 40th Avenue onto eastbound 270th Street. At five miles per hour, I having to avoid unmarked drainage grade and depression on the southeast corner of 40th and 270th, I could not make the turn without partially going into the opposing westbound lane. The change in the street width has resulted in more than a tight squeeze, has created unsafe condition. The 40th Avenue route represents the main, unimpaired, no speed bump access, emergency access into the east part of the Cambridge Neighborhood. The alternate access, 46th Avenue, has three speed bumps. The Federal Highway Administration Traffic Comics E-Primer indicates that speed bumps can slow down emergency vehicles as much as 13.8 seconds per bump. If emergency vehicles had to use this alternative route, they cannot safely make the turn, because they cannot safely make the turn from 40th to 270th, there's a potential increase of 41 seconds, which is not acceptable in terms of response. Please note that this change was not shown in the MDNS documents that the public had a chance to review, so we had no idea this was going to happen. We would have commented otherwise. We request, we are requesting that the city return the intersections to the 24-foot width. That's the safe thing to do. And we also request that the council, neighborhood council and the public at large be involved in any further changes to that intersection, so we can comment on it, please. Thank you for the opportunity to comment, and I look forward to some response.
Thank you. For council's knowledge and the, and I know that you've talked to Chad and, and folks that are watching, we have asked, required that that, the contractor stopped construction. It's gone back for, for new design to address these issues, and once we receive that new design, we will make sure that the neighborhood has an opportunity to take a look at that. So that there, all of that is in motion. I regret that we got to this place, but we are correcting it, working with the contractor and making sure that, that these issues have been addressed. So that is all in motion.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Kim, do we have any other speakers?
We do not.
All right. Thank you very much. Item number eight on our agenda is the consent calendar. The consent calendar is a compilation of work that the council has done at previous committee of the whole meetings, presentations, discussion, and each of these items has passed out of committee of the whole without any controversy. We have this evening items A through O. Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I can make a motion to approve the consent calendar, calendar, item A through O. Again?
All right, there's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries 5-0. Item number nine is other business. We do not have any this evening. 10 is bids. We do not have any bids this evening. Executive session, there is none. That brings us very quickly to item number 12, which is the end of our meeting. Want to thank everyone for joining us this evening, and at this point, we are adjourned.